Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody could stand and say the plegism.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You might have had some competition because I wanted to yell at you. Yeah, yeah. So we had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Do we need any additions or deletions to the agenda as it stands? May I have a motion to approve the agendas as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
And I'll second it.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda stands as it is. So, good evening. Tammy, do we need to make an adjustment?
Yes, to the order. If I can recommend to make an adjustment to the order of the recognitions because we do have some of our community members that
Absolutely.
may need to leave in order to go support their children and involvement with our school activities. So I guess I wasn't going to point you out.
Do that first. Let's move. Any issues? I don't think we need to adjust the agenda.
I don't think so.
Absolutely.
I stand corrected.
So we'll recognize our community partners first?
Yes.
All right.
So I'll come up here and do this because Ms. Allen loves this view. All right, so at this time, we really want to take an opportunity to be able to recognize some of our community community members who are also parents of our Nelson County Public School students and local business partners. So at this time, I want to recognize these individuals for ultimately really unsolicited facilitation, development, and implementation of the distribution of turkeys for our NCPS staff all throughout the division. And right before Thanksgiving, and it's always a great time to do something like that, but the reason why I point out, it was their idea to do this and it's always it was kind of an overwhelming event for us to be able to see our community come out and support our staff like that. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge our Taylor Smack on behalf of representing Blue Mountain, and thank you for your donation for the turkeys for our staff. Thank you very much. Apparently, there we go. We've changed who's taking the picture. So here you go. And there you go. We're just going to get closer to each other like you like.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's an honor to be able to contribute.
Yes, thank you so much.
To my 151 partners.
Yes.
That one's here from Gold Rock. And John is actually from Kelly Bronz Turkey. He's our turkey provider.
Yes.
And then of course, our school leader.
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna do that.
I am, but you know what? Probably more meaningful coming from you since you're a person involved in that. So with that being said, so Lindsay Doryer from Bold Rock, representing Bold Rock. So thank you so much.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll give all the credit to Taylor Smack. It was his brainchild. He rallied the troops, connected the dots, and just a really fun way to give back during such a meaningful time of the year.
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And to Mr. Doug Culver, who on behalf of Kelly Bronz, who actually provided said turkeys that we were mentioning that was able to be brought about. So thank you very much. You did that.
Awesome. Yeah, we're happy to do it, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, is Lena Greenwood, who's our parent community member, who really did a lot of the background work to make sure that the names are getting out there and the organization within the schools. And also was spearheaded the Community One Nelson t-shirts that helped contribute to the fundraising that goes to this because we wanted to be able to and this was also again her idea and many others' ideas, to provide an opportunity to fundraise for teacher appreciation. So this is one aspect of that teacher appreciation that will go back and contribute to that. So Ms. Lena Greenwood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And if the board wants to speak to say thank you, I'm going to start at least and say that, you know, one of the things this board has been really heavy in thought, was very important to our community, is that the schools are just one portion of our community. It takes our parents, it takes our local businesses to really make a community thrive, to make a school system thrive. And this is such a perfect example of the beauty of Nelson County and everything that's good about it. So thank you for not just being a business owner, providing jobs, but providing us a big thank you that was so important to our staff and to making them feel like they're seen, they're recognized. We thank you. We will definitely support your businesses. I do. I do my share. But we do appreciate everything that you all did. And Lena, just as a parent, you wear so, so many hats and we see you and we thank you for everything you're doing, seen and unseen. So I don't know if any other board members want to add to that.
I think probably the only thing I could add to that is you are really making the statement one Nelson. This is what we are about and we are forever grateful for each and every one of you to the part that you play, not just to the school, but to the community. We value what you bring to us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Kelly Bronz's turkeys are gold. They're not bronze. George, Margaret. I think you guys have said it.
You covered it all. Thank you so much for putting that together.
Thank you all. Again, anytime you want to come and join us at our meetings, please. Thank you very much.
Those are basketball hands. Run, run!
I'll tell you guys, if we expand, I'll be in Nelson County.
So we're back. Mr. Urban? So we're gonna, I'm gonna start off and I've asked Shannon to come up and help with this next recognition. VSB, the Virginia School Board Association, I think many of you were here when we as a group nominated Ms. Turner Giles for airperson from Nelson County for the VSB Advocate nomination. And I asked Shannon to help us with this tonight because Shannon, in putting Janet's nomination together, wrote the most beautiful acknowledgement and recognition of all of Janet's accomplishments. And I wanted Shannon to have credit for composing that letter and to read it, but I want you all all to hear the many things that Janet has done over the years as a part of VSB. But let me just say that the award and the recognition she received from the state level was more than warranted and was an exceptional honor, not just for her, but for us as a county, as well selfishly, for all that she represents and how she represents us as a community and as a school system. So Shannon, I'm going to give it over to you to read, if you don't mind.
Well, I would like to say that when Shannon gave me the charge to put together a nomination, I felt it was a daunting task to do it justice because I value so much Janet's contributions to our division and to our county, to our region, to our state, that I wanted to make sure that I could highlight it and do it justice. So I hope I did that and I was thankful that our nomination was chosen, but it was an easy choice, I'm sure, given Janet's contributions. But this was the nomination that was sent in. It is indeed with great pleasure that we submit the name of Janet Turner Giles for consideration for the 2022 VSB Advocate for Education Award. Mrs. Turner Giles has represented the North District of Nelson County on the Nelson County School Board since January 1st, 2014. Her father was a career educator in Nelson County, and though not a teacher per se, she has carried on his legacy of working tirelessly to provide a quality education for our youth. While initially focusing on the education of youth in her community, her lens has broadened to include the children who reside in our state and in our nation. Janet's boundless commitment to furthering the educational opportunities for all students has been recognized by many as she has served locally as a trustee, vice chair, and chair of our local school board. Wanting to make a larger impact on improving educational opportunities across the state, Janet became actively involved in the work of the Virginia School Board Association. Janet served as an at-large member, a chair of the central region, a nominating committee member, and a member of the audit and finance committees. Her exuberance, dedication, and proven leadership qualities has been recognized by school board members across the Commonwealth, and they elected her to be their leader in November of 2020. Janet served as president of the VSB in 2021. Former Governor Terry McAuliffe appointed Janet to the Virginia Department of Education School Readiness Committee in 2016. The function of the SRC is to build a highly competent early childhood workforce through advancing policy and programmatic recommendations for an effective professional development and credentialing system in order to positively impact Virginia's young children, birth to age five. In recognition of the fact that one of the most important factors in learning outcomes for young children is the capabilities of the adults who support their growth and learning, the first goal of the committee was to address the development and alignment of an effective professional development and credentialing system for the early childhood education workforce in the Commonwealth. Including, one, the development of a competency-based professional development pathway for practitioners who teach children from birth to age five, and both public and private early childhood education programs. Two, consideration of articulation agreements between associate and baccalaureate degree programs. And three, review of teacher licensure and education programs, including programs offered at comprehensive community colleges in the Commonwealth to address competencies specific to early childhood development. Four, alignment of existing professional development funding streams. And five, development of innovative approaches to increasing accessibility, availability, affordability, and accountability of the Commonwealth's workforce development system for early childhood education teachers and providers. Facing unprecedented challenges to education caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, former superintendent of public instruction Dr. James Lane appointed Janet to membership on the Virginia Mertz Committee, which was charged with helping the Commonwealth's public schools navigate the extraordinary circumstances and meet the needs of students, especially those who had fallen behind while their schools had been unable to provide in-person instruction and support. Using the Virginia Department of Education's Recovery to redesign and restart 2020 guidance document as a starting point, the Virginia Learns Work Group developed recommendations and identified resources and best practices related to scheduling and curricula, especially in literacy and mathematics, remediation and intervention strategies, assessments, data analysis, and technology to support instruction. The committee was also created, charged with creating and identifying resources and best practices to address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on the mental health and social, emotional well-being of students, families, and school employees. Though her tenure as president of the VSB has ended, Janet has not scaled back her involvement in advocating on behalf of our children. She was appointed by the VSB Board of Directors to serve on our task force, focused on assisting school boards and advocating for best practices and outcomes for improving the infrastructure of school divisions in the Commonwealth. The VSB Task Force on School Infrastructure Needs aimed to engage federal, state, and local leaders to ensure the need for increased federal and state resources was recognized as a critical priority. Given her role as a human resource professional at the University of Virginia, Janet was a natural fit to be appointed to serve on the task force for collective bargaining. This task force was charged with studying and submitting recommendations to the Board of Directors for best practices and guidance for school boards when deciding to enter into collective bargaining agreements. The face of public education is changing dramatically as we are emerging from the COVID-19 pandemic. The great resignation of 2022 and the resultant teacher shortage, stresses which impact the social and emotional wellness of students and staff, and other societal issues have negatively affected the classroom in a profound way. Advocates for public education are needed, now more than ever, as we must make others aware of the needs of our children. Our children have a right to a rigorous curriculum with robust course offerings and a safe environment that is accessible by all. Janet Turner Giles has taken this challenge on and is working to make a difference in our children's lives today and to positively impact their lives and their future as citizens in the Commonwealth. We as a board are thankful for the tireless efforts of Mrs. Turner Giles as she advocates for the needs of our children. We fully endorse the nomination and believe that she would be an exemplary selection if chosen, and she was chosen, to be the recipient of the 2022 VSB Advocate for Education Award. Congratulations.
Now, you know why Shannon read it. Like, how do you follow that? So Janet did all of that while raising two incredibly active kids on the road all the time. So we as a board say congratulations.
So Shannon asked, do I want to say anything? I was going to say, who is that person they're talking about? That's probably the first thing I'll say.
Because that's a beautiful plan.
So just one quick thing that I will say. First of all, I was overwhelmed and shocked at the convention. I think those that were there saw that, but I could not, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank this board, thank this board for the nomination. And as a board member, you do nothing on your own. It takes a strong board that is there to assist you and allow you the ability to go and do these things. So I want to thank this board. More importantly, I want to thank Shannon. Wow, I probably need to have you write my resume. But thank you for taking the time. Thank you for the time that you took. And also, finally, just want to thank all of those that were involved with getting my family there. That was probably the most surprising piece. And just want to let you all know that I don't take these appointments lightly. If there's ever a time where I have to be away from my family, it is a total 100% investment. So thank you for recognizing how important my family is to me and for getting them there. I think that was the double supplies or the icing on the cake. So again, I would say this award is not for me. It's really for the Nelson County School Board. So thank you all.
So Tammy, Tammy was really sneaky. Just so if you guys don't know, watch Tammy. She's slick.
Well, you all were slick.
It was well, well deserved. And thank you. Thank you for representing yourself and all of us so well. We appreciate it. It's quite an award and I hope as a community, we understand what an award and what that means. Very important. Thank you. Fall athletes. So I think we want to recognize, so our parents don't have to stay here for a long time, recognition of fall athletes.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker. Every meeting we get to see you, Mr. Walker.
All right, good evening. So we just wrapped up the fall sports season at Nelson County High School. The athletes did a great job this year. So a lot of our athletes that are here have been recognized tonight as part of the cross-country team. They were really young. A lot of them were freshmen, but they did a great job and they went on and competed at the state cross-country meet this year also in Roanoke. So I had the pleasure of being there. I don't know if they saw me, but I was there and watched them run. They had a good day. It may not have been their best competition, but it was a good experience for them. So at this time, we want to recognize some of those athletes. So Ms. Abby Hobbs, she was all-region 2C cross-country.
We're going to take your picture right there and we're going to get out of there.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
So for a student athlete to be all-region across country, it has to be in a top 15 or the top three teams to move on to the state competition. So great job, Abby. I don't think we have anybody else here. So Davion Rose, he was all-Dogwood District and all-region 2C kick returner. So the coach of Starbury, he did run a couple kicks back potential this year. So great job to him. Jack Winner was all-region 2C cross-country for the boys' cross-country team. Congratulations to that. The last person was Clara Moldenhauer. She was all-region also. So again, those students did a great job representing Nelson County Public Schools.
Abby, as much as we love to see you, you all are welcome. You don't have to stay for the rest of the evening. It kills me to see you braces him as a teenager because I remember when you were in a pep race with your mom years ago. But congratulations to you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done. Well done. Thank you all for joining us. So on with fun student stuff. I think we are going to have Ms. Raylan Allen come up and do her, I'm representing her BRBGS project course.
Good evening, everyone. Like she said, my name is Raylan Allen, and yes, I'm Becky Allen's daughter. As a part of Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School, my senior capstone project, I have chosen to do outdoor learning in public schools, and I have chosen to focus on elementary school-aged students. All right, so my capstone project, why outdoor learning? What do I mean by that? I mean outdoor learning by encouraging teachers to take their students outside to allow them to experience outdoors in an educational setting. And that provides numerous benefits, not just with their health, but also just letting them really get into nature and interact with their classmates outside of the four walls of a classroom. I chose outdoor learning because, myself included, I am a very visual, hands-on, experience-based learner. And rather than, sorry, rather than by the textbook or staring at a computer screen for six hours each day, which is kind of humorous considering that three out of four of my classes this semester are online. Yes. So for my internship, I decided to intern with none other than North Ranch School, which for those of you that do not know, North Ranch is a small privately-owned outdoor school for students anywhere from infant/toddler to all the way up to eighth grade, which is really impressive with how well they are incorporating the outdoors with their learning as well. My mentor for North Ranch was Mrs. Susan Butler, and she provided me with so many useful contacts and helping me make connections within the community to really get this project rolling. So my goal is to really impact Ty River. I apologize that my slides are not working, but there was a really cool picture that says Ty River rocks. But my project is supposed to be encouraging teachers to really take their students outside. And with that, I would like to put up sunshades over top of the picnic table that is in the courtyard area at Ty River. Now, what am I asking from you all? All I'm asking from you guys is for approval to be able to put up this structure. I have already gotten approval from my supervisor and Mrs. Tanya Carter, the principal at the elementary school, to do so, and this is my last stop to really get this project on its feet. My slides are all missing. I'm so sorry. As far as costs go, that is a big factor to consider, and due to inflation, prices are of course higher. Now, I would like to start a fundraiser purely donation-based to really fund this project. To go over the costs, an estimated price range is about $400 to be able to afford this project. That includes the sunshade itself, the wooden posts, any hardware that's needed, including concrete. It's going to be a hefty budget, but I think that I can really pull it off to really tip off encouraging this outdoor learning. Another aspect of this project is more behind the scenes, like sending out an email, widespread email to the staff at Ty River to really encourage this project and for them to actually know that they have the ability to take their students outside. This is also something that I would like to encourage teachers to be able to do at the other levels, such as the middle school and the high school, but right now, I'm strictly focusing on the elementary school because it is the fundamental levels and it is always possible to build onto it. I thank you all for your time and any suggestions and notes would be welcome. My future plans after high school are to attend Liberty University as a nursing major and to hopefully become a travel nurse. Thank you.
So just a little background, well, it's formerly known as the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. I'm transitioning to Blue Ridge Virginia Governor's School. Is your senior year, you do an action capstone project, and this is, you know, one of our seniors doing this project, and it takes a lot of time, and this is their senior year as they're getting ready to do things, and it really is one of those life skills and meaningful, relevant experiences because as they move on beyond us, these are the types of projects that quite frequently people encounter and really promotes some of the things that we're working towards as a division with the five Cs. And so I really appreciate her efforts and thinking, giving back to her school division in terms of a more flexible outdoor learning environment that can really engage and capture the attention and instructional value that we can provide. So I just want to say thank you very much for doing that. Congratulations and smile.
So Raylan, if we can ask, can we ask a couple questions?
Of course.
So you were talking about fundraising. What are you thinking? Are you donations? Are you going to try to search?
So my main focus right now is to do a donation-based funding, like you said. I plan on putting up posters everywhere all throughout the county to really broadcast this idea of outdoor learning at Ty River. Now, in the future, there is a small chance, depending on what is received from those donations, that I will be doing a small event to be able to help get the rest of those funds, to be able to put this up, because like I said, it is an expensive project, but I feel like it could really benefit the students at Ty River.
So you're saying one, you're looking for one shade and the cost of that with the pole is 400?
Just about, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think it's a really great idea.
Thank you.
The fresh air.
And one little thing that I would love to do is to actually be able to paint each side of the poles to make it more personalized to Ty River and really get that educational side of it going.
I just wanted to find out what the whole number was.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm really sorry about my slides.
No, it's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful job. Thank you, Raylan.
So the action needed from us then on that to discuss, I mean, would be just whether we approve moving forward.
There we go. Support and approval.
I think we can do that with consensus. Do we need to have a vote?
We can do it with consensus.
I agree. I agree. Raylan? I think it seems like you have support from the boards and we will be.
Absolutely.
Yes, well done.
Sure you're a nice red probably, ma?
Nope. Thank you, Raylan. I appreciate it. So now we've got Ms. Candy McGary from the county administrator, their county administrator, coming forward to give a presentation. You know, one of the things, again, we keep talking about sort of this collaborative effort is for all of us to be successful and for all of us to move forward in that one Nelson direction, we want to keep those lines of communication continually open. And so we appreciate Ms. McGary coming to our meeting to give us updates on the comprehensive appreciate Ms. McGary coming to our meeting to give us updates on the comprehensive plan and how things might impact schools that the county's doing. So, thank you.
Good evening, and first I'd like to thank Dr. Hester for the invitation to come and be a part of your meeting tonight, and then thank you all board members for all that you do for our community. Tonight, I'm just gonna give a brief overview of where we are with our comprehensive plan. There we go. This is just kind of an overview of our timeline. We have completed all of our public engagement activities up to this point. We had a youth art challenge, we had an online public input survey, and four public workshops, along with four listening sessions. And then we did a public engagement session that went over the results of the, all of this public engagement. And so now we are at the point where we are conducting the four joint work sessions between the board supervisors and planning commission, and we have our second one coming up in January. Going forward, we will have final review work sessions during the summer of 2023. BDOT will review our comprehensive plan also in the summer of 2023, and we will conduct public open houses in 2023 during the summer, and then finish up in the fall of 2023 with joint public hearings and adoption of the comprehensive plan. So in regards to our public input results, we had a lot of participation. I want to thank Dr. Hester and board members for their participation thus far and continued participation going forward. We had over a thousand people that participated in these activities, which ranged from, or included the public survey, an idea wall comments on the website, community workshops, survey responses, focus groups, the youth art challenge, and workshop participation. So we came away with four themes that we heard from the community, and that's plan and provide equitably for everyone, diversify and bolster the local economy, improve and expand vital community services, protect and connect to our rural environment. So along the lines of the theme of plan and provide equitably for everyone, the community told us there was a lack of housing choice and diversity in the county. All residents should have access to safe, well-built, and affordable housing. Approximately 28% listed housing was one of their top concerns for, during the survey responses. Not all part of the county have equal access to services, amenities, infrastructure, and/or information. Residents want improved county communication and community engagement. Improving communication was a top-five goal for workshop participants as well. It was also noted that the county offers few amenities and services for seniors. Nelson has a diverse culture and story, but it is not well represented. Young families and youth want more amenities, particularly recreation opportunities for kids. The top-desired amenities included playgrounds, athletic fields, and a swimming pool. What we heard from the community about improved and expanded vital community services was that the condition of existing water and wastewater infrastructure presents public safety and environmental health concerns. They would also like to see expanded coverage and improved EMS, fire, and police services, and response times, and like to continue to invest and improve the county school system. So of those three services, public schools ranked one, and fire and rescue was two, water and sewer was three. They would also like to see expanded alternative transportation options such as sidewalks and bike lanes, particularly in Nellis Ford and Livingston. Forty-eight percent, gosh, I can't read my own thing, of public transportation. Well, I apologize, I can't really read that at the moment. The public would also like to see public transportation expanded and access and service to support commuters, tourism, and cut down on drunk driving. Also, improving safety and mitigating traffic and truck, cut-through traffic along 151 and Route 6 should be a priority, and improvement of the access to local healthcare and other wellness services and amenities. And 28% of survey respondents said that Virginia 151 and Route 6 were the highest safety concerns for them. For the theme of diversify and bolster the local economy, we heard from the community that there were few job and career opportunities or economic drivers existing outside of tourism and agrotourism. However, 66% said that remote work jobs were most wanted. They also said the county has few new lodging options outside of short-term rentals. Residents feel short-term rentals negatively impact the housing market. They also said the lack of water and sewer infrastructure limits economic growth and community investment. Nearly half of survey respondents discouraged more short-term rentals to the tune of 46%. Residents want more shopping, retail, and grocery offerings in the county. There is a desire to expand commercial enterprises while protecting locally-owned businesses. There is a need for more local investment and education opportunities, including job training, workforce, and vocational training. Growth and economic investment is disproportionately focused on the 151 corridor. Our next theme, protect and connect to our rural environment, the community said that they wanted the county to focus on intentional strategic growth that respects the rural character of the county. New development should be clustered to protect both open space and productive agricultural lands and provide amenities such as access to parks and outdoor recreation. They also said they would like to see the rehabilitation of existing built areas of the county, such as Livingston, Colleen, Shipman, and Skyler, rather than developing natural landscapes. And also develop more outdoor recreation and ecotourism opportunities, including expanded and connected trail networks and public river access. Folks said our, the county's top strengths were its sense of community, natural resources, clean water, rural character, and agriculture. They would also like to see, or ensure that our built environment incorporates sustainable development and environmental protection, such as low-impact development and dark-sky-friendly practices. Residents are concerned about climate change and want to plan for climate resiliency and alternative modes of transportation. Providing public river access was a top goal for workshop participants and was number four on the list. So going from here, we have our second joint work session out of the four between the board supervisors and planning commission on January 18th, 2023. Topics to be discussed there will be natural and historic resources, community facilities, and infrastructure, to which input from the school division is being collected for inclusion in that workshop. And I also want to point out, our project website is www.nelson2042.com. So for, if you want more information, there's plenty of detail out there. Do you all have any questions?
It's really nice. I mean, I really appreciate having the consolidated information here. I'm not sure I've seen this before. I haven't checked the website since, since we participated in some of the work sessions, but this is really, thank you.
It's just good information, and I did include, but didn't include in my presentation, there are two extra sheets attached to the back of your presentation that shows a lot of the other workshop results and then the survey results. So not all of that was included in this presentation, but it is provided for you here.
Yeah, I think it's interesting for us as a board, when we read this and we look at it, what's our role? Where are we in this document? And when we look at that bio-community services, education was the number-one thing, and I, you know, when we talk about the partnership we have with the county, it tells us, again, we've got that responsibility, because our community citizens are saying this is, this is a priority. So, really, well done. Any questions for Candy as we're just clarifications?
No, but I do want to really express my thanks for you bringing this to us and for including us in, in the discussions. And so, you know, we're being kept abreast of what's going on and opportunities. I, you know, I'm not surprised that education is the number one, but there are so many great items of information in here. I mean, the housing, we hear the housing in the school system, we hear it all the time. And that's, we have people that work in the school system, they can't find affordable housing for them, and they wind up having to commute from other counties. So, and then, you know, obviously, infrastructure development and parks, things like that, that is, I mean, it's just, this is really well done. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I would just, I know that there has been a great emphasis in reading outreach of the collaborative effort and being a part of different projects and listening and being a part of it, so that is greatly, it is genuine, and we do appreciate the involvement and the genuine listening to feedback and being, and kind of being receptive to us. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
The work sessions, and Margaret, I know you sat in on a couple of the work sessions. I did. It was amazing to watch the energy, and, and I think you used the word synergy in another, the synergy amongst all of our community members that participated in those work sessions, because there really was that, that common theme of community and collaboration. People wanted to work together, they wanted to get to the good place where Nelson can be, to get there respectfully and appropriately and all of that, but just the ideas, it was, it was incredible to sit and feel the energy floating around the room for it. So I think the whole process has been done well.
Yeah, we are, we are really lucky that our community has been so engaged. They really have. They've done a wonderful job.
Anything else? Thank you. I know it's, it's time out of your busy schedule, but we do really appreciate this. I know you and Dr. Hester are doing a lot of great work together, kind of behind the scenes on a day-to-day basis, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Happy to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are down to the comments from board members. Shannon, George, do y'all want to start with comments from board members, or?
Ah, I already counted all that.
George, you get to go first. We'll switch it up.
I always have to go first. Not fair.
Okay. Well, there's so many really good things to talk about. I mean, our student athletes, and me personally, I'm really thrilled to see how many of them came from cross-country.
You might not have a personal interest in that one.
Maybe.
For those who don't know, George was a really good cross-country runner back in the day.
Say that again.
That was many pounds and a lot of years ago. So, but, but just really good job, and, and I really, I don't even know how you do all the things you do with your schedule. I mean, I think I'm busy, and then I hear all of that, and I'm like, how'd you do that? That's pretty, pretty amazing, pretty amazing and very well deserved. The presentation for your capstone project, that was just, that was, I'm so proud when I see students step up and want to do something good for their community. And these capstone projects, and I know it's deliberately set this way, but they're, they're very similar to like Eagle Scout projects, right? And it's deliberately put that way, and it's really good, because it teaches so many different things. It's community involvement, it's how to work with other people, it's how to plan a project, it's how to raise money for your project, how to work within a budget, you know, and that kind of thing. And the only correction I want to make for you is that you said that you're Becky Allen's daughter, and, and you are, okay? But now she is, if she is not already referred this way, she's, she's Raylan's mom. Okay, so you're, you're definitely stepping out, and that's, that's amazing to see. That's really good. This, in the report, I mean, just, you know, I think this is really good stuff, and I'm so glad to, that we got the update, and I'm so glad that, to see how many, how everybody in the county's working together. I remember 20 years ago when the last one was done, and it, it didn't quite go that way, right? And so now, it just seems like everybody is engaging, and there's a common goal, and, and people are bringing their different perspectives to the table, but working together to figure out what's best for the county as a whole, and I couldn't be more proud.
Well done. Who wants to go down the hall next?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Shannon. You're crying, I'm not crying, you're crying. But I mean, the theme, I think, of tonight is keeping the bar high, and when other people step up and do, you know, extra stuff, it leads everybody to say, hey, I can do that too, you know? And I think that, like, this board has, you know, excelled because we have a great leader on the team with us, and, you know, we all step up to the bar that she's set for us. So that's so proud, you know, so proud. And similarly, with the, you know, with the turkeys and all of that work that everybody put in together to, to appreciate the work that the teachers do that often goes so, you know, I mean, sometimes it's like, oh, you know, the teachers, or you know, the cafeteria ladies or whatever, but we have not heard a lot of that. We are all feeling the glow of the community stepping up and really providing for the staff and really appreciating them, again, setting the bar high. Candy, amazing, bringing us, you know, collaborating with us and making us feel like, you know, we're, we're the part of the team, you know? Also, really, really, really appreciate that. It's really One Nelson, isn't it? So I think we say it, and we live it, and we are it, and, and then if, again, bar is high, we all go up there. So it's great. Again, with our student athletes, with our BRVGS kids, I'm just proud of y'all. So that's Merry Christmas.
Mr. Dallas?
Probably the, only a couple of things that I would add. First of all, I really enjoyed the VSBA Annual Conference and having the opportunity to go there and participate in several wonderful sessions. So again, thank you to the board for allowing me that opportunity, and it was so good to have Margaret and Shannon and Dr. Hester there as well. In addition to all of what we've talked about, I've had the ability to go to the band concert this week. That was absolutely unbelievable, unbelievable. If you were there, you know what I'm talking about. Those students were just amazing. So just want to recognize that in addition to the athletics and BRVGC and everything else that we have said. Another thing in regards to recognition, because the work that is done here at the school, sometimes it is just because you know you have to do it, but the way you do it makes all the difference in the world. Just this week, we had an incident, and I really want to tell Dr. Hester for getting out messages to our community and to our family that are not just the message, but you explain the why. And let me tell you how that has just changed the tone of the county. People appreciate what you're saying, they appreciate how you say it, and they appreciate the timeliness of that. So again, I recognize it is what you are to do, but how you're doing it makes a difference. The next thing I would like to say is, not just as a school board member, but as a parent, I have the ability to be in the schools a lot, which I love. But when that message went out was a day that I decided to take my kids to school. And as I'm sitting there in the parking lot, I am observing Mr. Walker, I'm observing Mr. Yurbinski. They were walking around that parking lot. They were knocking on kids' doors and telling them to get into the school. You want to talk about One Nelson. So I had, on that very day, parents calling me, Janet, what's going on? What's going on? And I said, I am so glad you're calling me. I am sitting in the parking lot, and let me tell you what I'm witnessing. So again, it is something that we know we have to do, but it's the manner in which you do it that makes all the difference in the world. And I have to tell you with the other school districts that I'm privy to work with, that is not always exhibited at the other districts. We have something special here in Nelson, and again, it's because of the people that we have working here in Nelson. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you do every day, every day.
I would agree. I don't even want to follow that. That was, I 100% agree. I think, you know, we learn, right? We're a younger board, we've got a new secretary, and we learn every day. And I think the thing that I, I love about board and their system and the people in the places in our system is that everybody wants to do it better the next time. Like, how do we make it better communication to our community? How do we make it better communication for our staff, right? Like, if our staff are not comfortable, then that's going to bleed out. We need everybody to feel safe, secure, and understand what's going on within our, our schools. And so I think you hit it on the head definitely with, with what you were saying to Dr. Hester and her team. To add to that, Raylan, props. Great job, sweetie. Really well, well done. I do want to also recognize another BRVGS member who did a town hall. I do want to also recognize another BRVGS member who did a town hall. So a student did a town hall with their board of supervisors members, and thank you, Mr. Reed, for participating with the school kids. But my feedback, and I'm sorry it was not, we were out of town that day, was that it was very, very well done, and that is a very daunting, to lead the leaders of your county in a town hall meeting with questions and answers. So, well done, Heather, that was great feedback on that, thank you. So, play, let's talk about the play, right? Like, we've got so much good stuff going on with the play, the kids are killing it, so there are some, tomorrow, yeah, I was just going to say, thank you, thank you, tomorrow night. And then, the next competition is Saturday.
Monticello High School. I believe we perform at six, six forty, forty six.
Nice talk. You guys, just, again, that's a dynasty. When we talk about dynasties, that, that program is a dynasty, so congrats, good luck. We'll have all things for all.
Seven tomorrow at the high school, right? Seven?
Seven tomorrow.
Yeah.
Doors open at six thirty.
Hey, yeah, what you will as you want.
Oh, sorry, we're stealing her thunder. Oh, sorry.
You don't need to do it before the two.
You're done. So, let's see, student athletes, yes, definitely, congratulations to all the student athletes. The V S B A meeting was really good, and I think Janet hit, hit on this, that I don't think, we've become so insular in our community, I don't think we realize how many things we are doing so well and the good things we're offering out. And I know you're going to present on our course offerings in a little bit, I'm reading through that and I'm going, man, for community or size, for system or size, there are a lot of things, whether it's academically, whether it's athletically, whether it's the arts, that we are doing so well. And when you look at what other school systems are going through, whether it's their just trying to figure their goals out, or their offerings, we're there, you know? And it's like, so how do we keep taking it to the next level? It's what you're saying, not to show up, but what are you doing once you show up? So, it was, it was good to see that, it was good to be a part of that, but it was really good to come back and go, dang, we got it going on! You know, so. End of the semester, so we made it through, I'm not saying it to jinx it, but we're close, like, we're closing in on this last week of the first semester, and this has really been, this has been a stretch, right? Like, I, I know our students are probably ready for break, I know our staff's probably ready for break, but kudos to all of you all, administrators. This is the first kind of really real back-to-school post-pandemic that things feel as normal as they can feel at this point, and everybody has done a great job. I know getting the kids kind of back in that rhythm, and even getting staff back into that rhythm, everybody has done a great job working together and working hard, and we as a board see that and recognize that, and thank you for the extra effort, for the time, for all that you're doing, but we're closing in on the end. And then, it, it goes without saying, that 151, Nelson 151 group and Lena and the, the parents that stepped up, that's what it's all about. And that's, that's how we go to that next level, is that, that kind of support in the system. I think that's it for me, so important dates, closing in on the end of that semester. A recommendation. Yes, so recommendation, we look at those important dates, we had initially had, I think I called each of you about something, we can do a little adjustment, December 22nd to December 30th will be green workdays for staff, so.
Twelve months.
Twelve months, for twelve months. Green workdays for twelve months. So, again, that's not anything we need to vote on, that's just, it is, and it's just to say, save some gas and.
And to say, thank you.
So I will tell you, twelve months, people, that was, that was a joint, that was a recommendation from, from Dr. Hester and fully supported by the board, so we thank you guys. You're welcome. I think that's it for the dates. If you've got any questions on the dates, in the important dates, let me know. And now, not to steal your thunder, but comments from the superintendent, just kind of right on down five pages, a paragraph.
Yes, so, yeah, my staff's over there going, what's happening? So thank you to the school board for recognizing the hard work, you know, our 10 and 11 month have that one a break time to be able to kind of rest, recuperate, recharge, and every other R you can think of during that time. But those full-month employees spend a lot of, of that extra time in the evenings and just preparing for everything, and the teachers are too, but this is really an opportunity, and you give them a green day, gives them that flexibility to be able to, you know, their job done, and they're constantly, you know, answering emails and text messages from people like me, and so I just appreciate that, and it just gives them, it just gives them a little bit more flexibility and appreciation to spend time with the people that mean the most, and that's their families and their friends. So I, I just, I'm so thankful that we have such a supportive board, an engaged board that recognizes the work that it goes into, so thank you very much. On to more exciting stuff, our SR three plan, so that's pretty exciting. This is one of our outside funding sources that we try to go out and get to kind of have that One Nelson mentality. On our website, we are accepting comments, so every six months we go through wanting to gain public comments on that plan. And just a kind of reminder, because I know you guys check that website every day, those funds are being directed towards things such as air quality, healthy school environments, remediation, learning recovery, and social and emotional wellbeing. And so we also fund certain positions through, through these funds, such as transition guidance counselor, reading coach, reading specialist, ESL, or ESL teacher and long-term substitutes in teachers, teachers, I'm not sure what that is, but teachers. So I just wanted to be able to kind of put that out there, that, you know, if you want to take a look at that, that is something that we do gain public feedback. Also, want to say how much I appreciate the gesture of Nelson 151, that was a daunting task for community members to do while still engaged in their full-time jobs and, and parents, so that, that was a huge undertaking and a great demonstration of the One Nelson mentality. We recognize the importance of our business partners, our community members, our parents, everyone, in how we run as a county and as a, as a school system, and we want to be able to give that back to, to that thanks, and the fact that they look at us is, is really a great thing. Looking forward to the Lovinston Christmas Parade this Saturday, unfortunately, there's a conflict, we have the one act play that's taking place at six forty at Monticello, but we have the Christmas Parade, that we do have some representation. I appreciate Ms. Allen taking the reins and trying to organize some representation on the elementary schools, and Mr. Blake has done a great job working with different groups of the middle school to get them going, and Mr. Walker also, and getting that involvement. Taylor has been instrumental in being able to, to kind of coordinate the different vehicles, or just really being integral in ordering things and being able to be a part of decorating it, and so I really appreciate that. And they're both are going to give each other credit, but they both give, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work for that, in addition to their full-time jobs, in a highly stressful time of year. You know, anybody, it's stressful between, it's stressful all year long, but between Thanksgiving and the winter break, it just ratchets up a little bit, and so to go that extra mile, or we're taking it to another level, as the board's been talking about, I just really appreciate that. A part of this is our staff, we're, we're heading closer to finalizing our first semester, but, you know, packed into this time period are winter growth measures and assessments for our elementary and middle school, and then for our high school, it's our end-of-course SOL testing. So, you know, there's that big push that can be stressful and very meaningful towards the, the winter break, so that's why we get to be able to have that break. I had a great opportunity to meet with some Rockfish River Elementary students this morning to talk about, like, what do you enjoy about school, and what do you enjoy about Rockfish? And they were, and it was really refreshing to be able to listen to them, and they recognize that, you know, we're taking our, our assessments, but the teachers really, they really help us and they don't make us feel too stressed about it. So it's, it was really cool to be able to listen to second, third, fourth, and fifth graders, be able to be thoughtful in their answers, and that was great. And as, as was mentioned, the town hall meeting that was facilitated by Matthew Drosnoll, one of our BRVGS students, and what we failed to mention is it wasn't just in front of our community members and school board and board of supervisors, but we had pre-deeds there, correct?
Pre-deeds and Amy Lawford.
Amy Lawford, yes, yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry, I left that out.
Senator and a delegate.
Yeah, Senator and a delegate, so, you know, there's, you know, talk about bringing legislators to school, so there's some involvement there, and, and they really seem to appreciate it and be engaged in it. So that's fantastic work, but also part of that is our other seniors for BRVGS were able to present their projects and be able to talk about that. And that was, it was really great because they're diverse ideas, but very engaged in it, so I appreciate that. Winter activities are in full swing, break a leg, I'm trying to learn all the right words for our advanced drama students going for the one act play. If you have not seen it, I highly encourage you to go tomorrow night and see it. You really recognize for, for a small community, a small rural community, how infinitely talented our students and our staff is, because our staff has a lot, you know, the driver and all of these people are great, but our students are phenomenal, and, and it's just really worth it. It is kind of being used as a fundraiser of sorts, and so the ticket is, is as you donate, like, whatever you choose to donate to them, and, and obviously in the holiday season, this is something that supports their trip to New York in the spring, and so it's something, it's really worthwhile. And, and really, that's, I think that's, that is, I, I, you took it off.
That's good. Here, Janet alerted me that on our agenda, we somehow left out the student comments, section, student rep comments, so we're going to add you in right now, and if you've got some comments you want to share with us or come to the podium.
I mean, everything that I was going to mention, you guys.
I should have waited.
All right. Okay, nothing, everything's fine. All right, thank you.
Well, and I will, so, as I mentioned Rockfish, we're going to go around, I'm going to go around to each of the schools and meet with students who are representing the schools for superintendent student advisory group, and so I also invited her and her compatriot to be able to be a part of that, so they can represent anything that might need to be shared in this platform. So I appreciate it, because I think as adults, we sometimes forget, you know, we're in the business of serving students, but sometimes we forget to stop and ask students, how's it going? What can we do better? What's going, you know, the KISS method, would keep, keep it, stop it, start it. And when you ask the kids that, sometimes it's aligned with what you think, and sometimes they're like, oh, man, I didn't, I didn't realize that that was how that was coming off on students. And so I really appreciate the input that you guys have and in the, and to get you guys to feel comfortable in being able to provide that feedback, because it's crucial.
Absolutely. And one of the things Dr. Hester and I just talked to Kira about before the meeting, and I would love feedback from you all, is some of this mid-year touch point outside of the meetings, and what, like, she started about what's going well, but, you know, what are the things that we can do to improve your experience at our meetings and what you bring to our meetings? So as you all have feedback between now and when we can get that scheduled sometime in January, definitely share that, and we'll, we'll discuss it with the students. Thank you, thank you, guys. Do we have any comments from the public? Anybody signed up?
No.
No public comments, okay. So we're on their consent agenda, any questions about the registers, the financial report, or the second readings of the regular meeting minutes from October 13th, and the call meeting on the 24th? If there are no questions, comments, then can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as a whole as presented.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved as presented. So we're on to the items for information section of our meeting. We do have the first reading of our November 10th meeting minutes, take some time if you got an opportunity to read through that, if there are any corrections or changes, please let Tammy know so that she can be grateful for our final reading. And here we are, folks, starting into looking at next year. So Kim, I think you are up for the next little bit for the registration process for next year, 2023, 2024, because really in my mind, we're starting 1988, right?
So our, our goal is always to help students transition even from 1988 to the present day. So really to transition that phase in educational, in their educational journey, and really it's a successful part in that, so really helping them to achieve success at a high level. One of the ways that we do this is preparing them in the transitions that they have, so the learning environment itself, the course preparation process, really providing them with what they need for, you know, setting their own goals. So, in an effort to get that, to stay organized on top of this, our division plans every year a registration process, a registration schedule, and I've included that for you tonight. And in that registration schedule, you'll see recommendations, times for teachers, for students, and courses, orientation, registration process itself, transition nights are included, school visits for our eighth to ninth grade, and our fifth to sixth grade, new course introductions and the programs of studies, and when, what those timelines are for that process. And as part of that process, the new course request for 23, 24, what we do every year, we have a program or a way that our teachers actually submit new course requests, that they have an interest in, I think their students have an interest in, most importantly. So they actually survey their students in certain programs and get input from the students as part of that process, and then they submit those requests to myself, and here I am with the board showing what we're going to submit and propose for the new year. The first course proposed is AP Precalculus. Now, you would think, oh my goodness, who wants to take AP Precalculus? But when they surveyed the students, overwhelmingly, the students chose AP Precalculus over some of the courses that are currently, or one course in particular, the math analysis courses currently being implemented. And it seems like there's an overwhelming response, if they have an interest in it. The course would be a replacement course for math analysis, and the opportunity for students to really participate in a rigorous college-level course, the potential of college credit for that course, and the course will prepare students for other college-level mathematics and science courses, and really include a framework of content and skills common in college Precalculus, and health science, and data science, biology, physics, are all things that can help prepare students for those foundations. Students with high academic standing would be the ones who have completed Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. A lot of our Algebra II honors students would be included in this process that would want to take this course, according to our survey. They'd have the option to participate in that course sequence with trigonometry, AP Precalculus, and then AP Calculus. And that would be offered in the spring semester of 2024. The second course proposal is performing musical theater, and we've talked about our theater group and what Mrs. Driver's done, and our arts department as a whole, and looking at this, we just do whatever they want us to do at this point. They just have so many achievements. The course would be an elective offering for students in grades 10 through 12. The course prerequisite would be the successful completion of the introduction of theater course, and would be offered in the place of one section of intermediate drama, and so the two courses offered. It's designed to assist in the acquisition of dance, music, and theater skills necessary for musical theater, and students would build an understanding of the musical theater disciplines and explore career paths and cross-curricular connections with dance. The course builds a foundation for those students who are interested in theater, dance, performance, and production. On top of that, we would then enter these into our program of studies, and the program of studies that I've given you in red, those courses are designated, so any changes in the programs of studies are designated in red. There weren't many changes as a whole for that program of studies, except for those new course proposals. Do you have any questions for me?
I love the AP Calc, Precalc option, I think, you know, one of the things that we hear feedback on is that when kids get to college, especially with the math, sometimes the rigor of college math versus high school math can be a little bit more challenging, so I think the opportunity to give them a two-course option of what that rigor's going to look like, and maybe even to test out of even having to do college-level math through those AP courses.
Absolutely.
I would support that for sure, especially if the kids said that that was.
Yes. And I bet Ash, I believe the dad would support that as well, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any questions, Kim? Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
So our next item for information is the N C P S Inclusive Action Plan with Jennifer McCormick.
Good evening, ma'am, chair, Dr. Hester, members of the board. Included in your board docs packet this afternoon, you have a summary of the Virginia Inclusive Action Plan Self-Assessment and Planning Tool. This was something that was new to Nelson County Public Schools, as well as all other divisions and directors of special education in Virginia. So the Inclusive Action Plan and Planning Tool must be completed at least once every three years, beginning in the 22, 23 school year. And the planning tool itself assessed 10 overall focus areas, with having sub-standards in each area as well. I have listed each of those focus areas or standards in your document. Once each of our principals and schools had completed their own assessment, we took that information and combined it into a division assessment and action planning tool, and you have included in your documents the strengths as well as the areas for growth. As no surprise, one of the identified strengths across the board and for our division are our teachers and staff that are student-centered and committed to helping students. We also actively seek ways to accommodate the diverse needs of our learners, and so we need to just give a shout out to all of our staff, which we do on a regular basis, but all of that really does go back to our staff. The specialized support across all levels kindergarten through 12th grade, and creating positive learning environments that are physical, physically accessible and supportive. I've also listed areas I've also listed areas of growth, which we will continue to work on and evolve throughout the school year, which includes the development and implementation of division-wide goals and visions for inclusive settings. Based on the identified strengths and areas for growth, action steps were developed that will be ongoing beyond this school year. We will also not wait three years to do this again. So since this is new, this is an ongoing effort that we will continue to evolve. We'll continue to monitor and adjust, seek opportunities to support our staff and students, and maintain high expectations for all. We're grateful for your continued support of our schools, our staff, our students, their families, and our community. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm loving the action steps, just yet the coordination of teacher schedules for co-teaching and just the acknowledgement of trying to be as efficient with the time, but anything?
No, very good.
Did you get feedback from the teachers, from everybody that went through this about what, was this process a positive one since it was new? Or was it like, oh, my Lord, not another thing we have to do?
So we've tried to make it as simple as possible for our staff. They were sent an electronic form survey, which should take them less than 10 minutes to complete. And then we compile all of the data together. So I think like anything new, it's a little bit different and what are we going to do with it? And I want to make sure that as a division, we do take that information and we follow through with it so that it doesn't just become one more thing we're doing, so that we're giving everyone a voice and then turning those into action steps that help our staff, that help our students, and that help our community.
Thank you very much.
So Dr. Hester, we are to your pathways. All right, who has the thing on my mouth?
Okay, we're ready to go. All right, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to highlight all the great things that are taking place here in Nelson County. First and foremost, let's talk about the office of administration, which is kind of all-encompassing and it's the one that Ms. Urban kind of takes the lead on. And it's been a very busy eight days in December. We've been working through some check fraud and a great like catch by a local employee of a bank up in Spotsylvania to kind of recognize something doesn't seem right and then really started the process to be able to start the investigation of that, which is really great. Obviously, you know, the increase in all these types of fraud activity are spreading all throughout and I just appreciate the exhaustive efforts of Ms. Urban and everybody trying to chase this down certainly keeps you on your toes. We also are going through the process, processing and facilitating insurance claims, whether it's to student accidents, workers' comp, unemployment, all those types of things that take place throughout a division. And also, I really want to say thank you so much to the school board for supporting the distribution of the bonus checks to all of our employees. And not every division was able to do that or had the support of their boards to do it for every employee. We got money from the state for the SOQ positions, but it was incumbent upon our board to really make sure that all of our staff are able to take advantage of that and then get that out just in time to put it back into the local economy of being able to invest at holiday time. So I just appreciate the efforts of Ms. Urban and our payroll offices to be able to make sure they did that. We wanted to actually have a physical check and that was the plan, to have a physical check and the green envelopes to be able to give everybody because there's just something emotional about being able to get that check. But I will bring you back to the first point that I made, that there was fraud investigations and there were actual physical checks that took place. And so we had to go to Plan B, which is the direct deposit. But as you see in the right, this was the season's reading letter that was sent out in the green envelope. We did have some employees that don't do direct deposit and so we took care of that. But we still got something that was exciting and we greatly appreciate it. There was an attendance to the VASBA conference, which was chock full of great information, but really a great opportunity for school board members to interact with other school board members and other superintendents. And then for us to be able to interact with other school board members and superintendents and vendors and things like that, just to be able to see what's on, you know, what our options are in terms of how can we bring some new ideas back to our division. And then also working with material vendors, we're going through the ROTH project and we will have the collection of all those, was it the RFPs for tomorrow? Yep, tomorrow. And so we'll be moving forward with the ROTH project. So I appreciate all the effort on that. And we all know that we make fun of my, how I say ROTH. I got it, I understand. Next is, oopsie, instruction, there's a lot going on. We had the Virginia ASCD conference out in Williamsburg where we were able to take a few employees out there to be able to, to kind of have that professional learning that Ms. Giles really promotes so greatly, to be able to have that quality of professional services to our students. Also, a lot of the classroom visits we start to see taking place, we want to be able to get out into all of our classrooms, but really we had a strong focus on Ty and Rockfish in terms of the Title I classrooms. You can see a lot of great stuff taking place in these pictures and I really appreciate it. A lot of great effort and emphasis on the literacy website creation. And this is really kind of cool because it's going to be a collection of resources that focus on literacy and all the different things that can be taken place that can be viewed and supported by our families or our community and other teachers being able to take a look at it. I mean, it's, it's, it's an undertaking, but we're creating the K through three to be piloted for Title I reading specialist. And so it's a collection of individuals really working on this. And actually, Mr. Cargill, the guy hiding in the other room, but works with our technology, is also working really strongly to support these teachers to be able to get this information out. We really appreciate the partnerships we have with our community with the free bus, the free book bus and the visit that it made to Ty River and Rockfish. And the students were able to select two books and you kind of see the pictures up there of the student being able to look at the various options and choose a book. With our pre-K classes and ECSE class observation, it's a, it's a platform that we use to be able to observe and know that we are delivering the best possible services are taking place. And also, Ms. Douglas was able to attend something called Launch, which was put on by Louisa County Public Schools. And it was a teacher-staff-led professional development day with an emphasis on the five Cs, and we talk about that. But when we say the five Cs, it's kind of, we are going to, it's a passion of mine, taking on the initiative of building a profile of a Nelson graduate, which encompasses the five Cs, which is communication, collaboration, creativity. I always forget these because I always think, oh, my gosh, I don't want to forget them, but critical thinking and then citizenship. And so those are those applicable skills where it's one thing to know the content, but if you can't apply it and you can't integrate it to your life, you're not going to be as successful as you can possibly be. We also have the formal recognition, all this, this took place in the summer, we had the formal recognition of Nelson County High School Agricultural Education Program. And it comprises two smaller program areas, which is the production agriculture and then horticulture. So you see Ms. Seaman here being granted the, one of the awards. And it's the Nelson Senior FFA chapter that boasts 100% FFA membership. And the members participate in various local, state, and national FFA competitions, workshops, and conventions. Our students' performance show very, very well. In fact, we have some students moving on to the national competition soil. So it's a great program, supports the various efforts of our students and the hard work of our teachers. I know Mr. Ramsey's here in the back and Ms. Seaman and his grooms, everybody puts a lot of effort into this. And all students participate in work-based learning activities through their supervised agricultural experience program. Thank you so much for that. People personnel, not Ms., but Dr. McCormick and her team are continuously working through the various reports that they have to submit. You know, you just listen to the inclusive practices that she outlined. And it's, it's a lot of work, but as she said, you want to keep staying on top of it and it's new and we want to make sure that we're giving the best possible supports and programs to our students. Also, collective participation in Red Ribbon Day. If you'll remember back in October, it was Kindness Month, but there's a week in there, Red Ribbon Week, where it's anti-drugs. And so getting the students involved, and you see Ms. Vest in there with different students celebrating Red Ribbon Week. Also, various activities to support certain skills, articulation activity in scavenger hunt to make a turkey during a speech session. And then you also see a student just working on following directions and making a recipe. I don't know about you, I'm not the best cook out there, so following directions I hear is always a good thing. And so we give our students those real-life, meaningful practice opportunities that they can take with them. And then last but not least, working on fine motor skills while completing turkey activities. And obviously, this is leading into November and Thanksgiving. Human Resources, they're always busy because it's a constant support system for our staff and also always on the lookout for the high-quality individuals that we can recruit and retain and get here. And so Ms. Walker and Ms. Cho attended the VASBA conference in November, which had informative presentations on how the BDOE is approaching pathways for teacher licensure and we talked about those shortages and how to continue to promote the hiring through a challenging climate. And then also current and future grant opportunities to support staffing. All the while, continuing to recruit substitutes. And I also highly encourage, sometimes when we say substitutes, people automatically think we're talking just in a classroom. But we also encourage you can be a substitute in the classroom, in the cafeterias, buses, in a various amount of ways. And so we highly encourage that participation. And technology, working with different vendors to get quotes for new cameras. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we had $250,000 grant opportunities for school safety environment. Some of those things have been built into what we've already begun to push through and purchase and some of these are some of the cameras. And what you see in that first picture up here to the left, one of the things I talked about is expanding our view that we have in our parking lots. You know, we're off at 29, we want to make sure that we can see. And one of the things that was important to me is I want to be able to see every car coming and going into that campus. And so one of these cameras allows us to be able to do that. And you can kind of see the up close in the distance and read license plates or be able to see some things. It's really cool opportunities that we're looking into and just getting various quotes. And he's in a collaborative work environment of, you know, transportation, technology, maintenance, and working through the safety and security audits. Not audits, I'm sorry, the grants and trying to make sure that we kind of select common sense practices to be able to apply. Also, worked really closely with the turkey donation and being able to bring the drone out to be able to see, and so you see the drone shot there, the distribution of the turkeys to our staff. He's also continuing to work to secure any kind of disaster recovery game plan for cybersecurity as we know that this is on the rise all throughout the nation. It's something that it doesn't matter if it's a household issue or automotive cybersecurity or medical cybersecurity, all of it in schools. And we have student information systems that we want to make sure we protect and maintain. And then also working to implement these steps in the cybersecurity plan. So we appreciate all the efforts with that. In terms of maintenance, preparing for the fire marshal, it's always a very stressful thing for not only teachers, but for our maintenance supervisors to be able to plan for. And we had a fantastic report, particularly at our elementary schools. And I've heard Mr. Campbell talk about how it was probably one of the best reports that we've had since he can remember. And I, it's attributing to our principals, you know, Mr. Campbell and all of our teachers and our staff, because that, we want to talk about a collective effort to make that happen, particularly during a holiday time. And I'll just leave it at that. We also work on all different maintenance things like a five-inch waterline leak repair from the middle of the high school complex. We're bringing in the roof project timeline to kind of make sure that we're getting to the point where then we go through the action portion of that. Maintenance, working to secure bids for new security grant projects, as I talked about, the collaborative effort with transportation technology in the schools. And also working on getting those different security measures to be then put into place. Working to secure bids for the repair of the middle school storm drain and erosion issue that we see in certain parts of that area. And you see in the upper right, the ROTH project and some of the areas that will be addressed as we, as we move forward with that. In terms of transportation, it's really cool. Mr. Ashley and his team are working on, looking at apps that allow them to test out like turn-by-turn directions. I don't know about you, but have you ever seen a substitute driver try to figure out where they're dropping students off? You know, they're holding, sometimes they're holding a piece of paper because they're trying to read the routes. And so trying to find different ways that can, you know, result in safer driving, result in more efficient, so we can track where the buses are, we can track, you know, how many times they can track the speed, they can track the location, they can check students in and out. There's a lot of opportunity here that Mr. Ashley's taken his team to be able to look through to see what their options are because it's safer, it's more efficient, and we can just move towards supporting our drivers, our students, our families in the system in a more efficient manner. And I appreciate that. And as I mentioned before, the HR recruiting high-quality staff, we're doing really well, knock on wood, with our bus drivers, but we're always looking to get those substitutes for our car and van routes. Sometimes we think it's just buses, but we do have a lot of drivers that are car and van and it takes a lot of effort to be able to support that as well. So again, you can, you can multitask, you can be a substitute car and van driver and maybe also work in the cafeteria. So it's just a fun day all around. And not last but not least, but like food nutrition. Ms. Canal and her team put a lot of effort into being very creative in what they do in supporting our students. And they provided holiday meals at all of the sites and provided the decorations and food and company in collaboration with a lot of the building leaders and teachers. And it was a really great, well-attended event. I believe Ty River, correct me if I'm wrong, has another event for winter? Do you have another? That's today. Okay, that was right, lunch was today. Just due to the size and not being able to have every family at every grade level be able to do that, so that was today. And then also working through the CACFP after-school supper meal program. We provide all of our after-school activities that have some kind of instructional or active program meals for those students. And then also 4P new produce program that provides access to the local food hub and review of these programs that are taking place. I did ask students at Rockfish this morning, how do you like the taste test Tuesdays? And they really are enjoying it. And there's, one of them said, I love the fish tenders. And he called it catfish tenders. I'm like, holy cow, you know, elementary school, being able to really expand their palate to be able to, and like thought to bring that up. And then another girl was like, I liked the sweet potatoes, I wasn't sure about the taste, but I just said I liked it because it was good. And again, it's taking local foods, it's being creative, and it's giving our students choice and voice in what's taking place in their buildings and I really appreciate that. And last but not least, again, we've said it time and time again, but thank you to Nelson 151 and Kelly Bronze Turkeys. It was an overwhelming gesture of appreciation and support. And it doesn't take place in all the divisions. And I think we really, really need to kind of, as Ms. Turn Gillis said, like if you work with these other school divisions, you hear what's taking place and it isn't like this everywhere. And so just, you know, as you go in through the reflective season, just it really is heartwarming to know that this is the support that we have. And even when it comes to media, you know, Ms. Emma Martin was there to be able to cover it because not for necessarily selfish reasons, make us look good, but also for our community. Our community deserves to be put out in front and have the light shine on them because of their efforts and because we can't do what we do without them. And so I appreciate you doing that. And that, that goes far more than anybody can really realize what that does for a community. And I really greatly appreciate that. And that's, that's it, that's all I have. Happy holidays to everyone and everybody here in the, in the community that came out this evening. Any questions?
Thank you very much. So last item on the items for information, it's that time, y'all. Yeah, we're here. We just did this. So school board budget input and consensus. Tammy was really good to remind us and tie us back to what our board goals are when it comes to budgeting. And I'm just going to quickly kind of remind us. Student success is goal number one. Engaging safe and healthy environment, goal number two. Operational excellence, goal number three. Highly qualified workforce, goal number four, and community engagement, goal number five. So as we enter into this, this new school board budget season, I guess, Gina, do you want to step into this or, you know, what are the things that are going to be important to us this year as we attempt to continue to reach our goals as a board? And again, Gina, I don't know, have you got some ideas or just leading, you always lead us so well through these conversations.
So this is the second year of the millennium. So we have a baseline budget that the state approved earlier though that we'll use as a starting point. Next Friday, I believe, is when the governor will be announcing if he's going to have any changes in his recommended budget. So we will incorporate any changes that he has. Those are the things that we're going to be required to do. What I need to hear from you are the things that you would want to do beyond what is minimal that we require. So I know that there were some things that we attempted to do last year that we wanted to do. I guess I need guidance to see whether we want to continue on that path. We wanted to be at the 25th in the state on our teacher scale from beginning to end and we made great headway. But there is a group that we have left out that we haven't been able to address yet. So I guess I would need direction from you to see whether that would still be a forward goal. The DEA publishes a report, it's dated in December, but usually we don't get it until January, that ranks every division. So I don't know exactly what that cost would be because it's a moving target as we make increases to our scale. Everyone else across the Commonwealth is also making increases to their scales. So I need to find out, you know. increases to their scales, so we need to find out, you know, where we stand relative and put together a salary proposal that would meet the 25th in the state if that supports Another thing that we, the superintendent and I had talked about, is recognizing the fact that we had asked our instructional assistants to study and to take a test to become certified parent professionals. The state or the testing service recognizes an associate's degree to be the same as a parent pro academic score, and so we would like to propose the possibility that you would consider giving a half of a degree supplement, since it is an associate's degree equivalent to our instructional assistants that have that degree. So we're looking at around a $1,500 per year supplement if they pass the parent pro. So if someone is hired and they don't have that, they wouldn't get the $1,500 until they actually pass the test. I think it would go a long way, recognizing the professionalism and commitment of our instructional assistants, so I'd like to throw that out for your consideration. I guess the only group that we were not able to put in a half a percent between each step that we have for all of the other scales is the administrators group. So that's something that the board could also consider, is to finish the, that process of having a half a percent between each step. Minimum wage, I know that when we started last year, that we wanted to try to get to $20 an hour minimum wage. We were not able to fund that, but we were able to fund the $15 minimum wage and the half a percent across all the other scales. So if the board wanted to revisit that $15, I would be direction on what that number would be. So those are the things in terms of compensation. Health insurance, I'll need to look to see what industry trends are, but that will include an increase based on what the market is overall. I don't have specific Nelson County information yet, probably won't until February. Other benefits should stay the same because it's the second year of the biennium, so we'll be looking at the same PRS, retiree healthcare credit, those things.
Is that good, Shannon? So I think as a board, what we need to do is, based on Shannon and Central Office's recommendations, where do we continue as a board to see those as a priorities? Are there things that we want to add, things we want to potentially, what is kind of our feedback based on Shannon's suggestions at that point?
I think for, you know, I think all of those things, if you all want me to go first. I definitely think we need to do the correction in that 15, the one group that we left out, we were not able to accommodate last year. I mean, I certainly think that 15 and 20 year, we've absolutely got to address, because I think that group continues, while the others we worked towards that 25%, that group continues to sit as an outlier from that. And that's, you know, as a one Nelson, that's not the most we necessarily want to send. So I think we absolutely have got to look at correcting that, correcting that group. And I don't know you all's feelings on that. I think we've asked our instructional assistants at parent pros to step up, and I would be interested to see what the cost for that is for that half a degree, but I mean, you've asked them to do that extra work with the expectation that that title, that should bring some additional acknowledgement. I don't know.
You go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, totally agree with all of this. You know, I am a huge proponent in getting our salaries up as high as we can to show the value of the work that our teachers and our administrators are doing, so I'm always a proponent there. I completely understand the parent professional, I'd be interested in hearing, Shannon, what's that number? How many are affected by that, and what does that look like? Professional development is key for me, so if individuals are doing that, we need to support them in getting that degree, but also supporting them once they receive it. Certainly, I am a huge proponent of that minimum wage and getting it up as high as we can. We tried that last year, we did the best that we could, but there's always more room that we can do with that. So yeah, I think, I think as we go into this, all of the things that we had on the table previously for me still stand. Are there other things I'd like to see done? Of course, and I know that we'll have further conversations about that as we continue with the budget process. Absolutely. Get to starting.
So, you know, I agree with all of the goals, always, with that, and I thank you for the information and the way that you have presented it. You know, and this is the goal-setting wishlist phase of our budget development. And I want to, like you all have said, I want to see our salaries up as high as we can get them to a level that we can attract the people that we need to attract, the professionals we need to attract, and to retain the ones that we have. And, you know, hiring and retention in any business, whether it's a school system or any other, just like the budget, that's the biggest part of the budget, but that is the biggest cost. And the only way to maintain continuity within the school system, or the best way to do it with the students and with curriculum, is to be able to retain the people that we have. So, you know, we want to continue doing that. So far, we're doing a really good job, but there's always more work to do. So I would agree, I would like for us to do that. I think certainly wherever we align in the index is where we should try to have our salaries be, you know, a target for our salaries. And so we should continue working towards all we can to try to get to that top 25, because that's generally about where we are in the index, listing compared to other counties in the state and cities. And then we do, we certainly have one group, and it is a, all the groups are very, very important, but I think the one group that's left, we really need to try to make that a priority over all other things to get that on par with the other groups, bringing them up, because it's key, you know, and this particular group is, that's a key time in the career, so. And that's when you, you know, people are hitting their stride, is where. And so, no, I mean, I think we need to, we need to do all of those things as we can. You know, obviously, we're going to be limited on things that we can do, I'm sure, by some things, but, but yeah, I'm all for trying to do all we can to retain.
I'm always about teacher pay, so, you know, there's no, I'm not even going to repeat what you said.
Also the other position.
Yeah, 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 when I say teacher, I mean everybody, so I should probably change that. But I feel like everybody who's associated with the kids and is building our teachers, you know what I mean, even if they don't have the credentials, that's kind of how I excuse my lack of clarity. But, so yeah, pay, scales, for sure, is one of my priorities. The other thing, I think sometimes, since it's, you know, pay is a big money ticket item, it's always what we get stuck on a lot. And sometimes we don't talk about other things that we may need in the classroom that help our staff do their best job, like equipment, and I don't know if that would fall under CIP or what, but, and I know textbooks don't really necessarily count. I'm thinking about like microscopes and, you know, all of those technological things that we need. I don't know if there's like things that are out there that we haven't paid attention to for a long time, we put it on the back burner, are there, are there things that we can do that will, you know, up student success, and we got some new classes coming, what can we do in the classroom? How can we, you know, what have the teachers been doing and the aides and everybody been doing without that we could maybe bring to make the content more relevant and whatever, that, you know, help the students be more successful? So I don't know, I mean, it may not be a big ticket item, but if we call attention to it and it makes a difference, then, you know, that would be something that I'd be interested in, in looking at, you know, not just, I mean, secondarily to pay. I think that's a tiny thing, maybe, but, or maybe it won't be a big budget item, but it might make a big difference, you know?
And if you have a crystal ball in terms of gas prices, propane prices, and things that cost.
You've got a crystal ball, Shannon, not doing this job. Come on now.
Well, depending on which service you listen to, you know? But I thought the gas was like steadying out now, so.
They're predicting possible diesel shortages, so no way about that.
Yeah, well, that's always. Maybe we'll get all electric prices.
Margaret brought that up, and we were talking, I went into a science class, I don't know, a year or so ago at the high school, and maybe even earlier this year, and all the microscopes, the wires were cut. Every single, I'm like, wow. And maybe there's a reason for that, but wow, what are we missing in those classes if there's actually a light, a light goes on? So I think Margaret makes a good point, is there's nothing that takes away from the salary, right? That's super important, but one of the things this board, I think, is continuously talked about is, how do we kind of get beyond the budget and get in the classroom and figure out ways to elevate, in material-wise, what's in those classrooms, elevate that classroom experience beyond just the teacher, right? Because the teachers are fantastic, the staff are fantastic, but how do we change the materials and the hardware they use, so to speak? So I would, as Margaret suggested, it would be interesting to see, you don't want to say a wishlist, right? Because then if people don't get the things that are on their wishlist, then that creates a frustration that was never there to begin with. But what are the, what are the hard scape, the hard tools that could be needed in a classroom to change what that experience is? And I think I would agree with Margaret, it'd be interesting to see what that could be.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, we all just recently had the experience of going into a classroom where we recognize that there's not even enough outlets to allow them to recharge their computers. So it's, so it's the big things, but it's also the bigger things. How can they even function in those classrooms when the cord won't even reach, or we only have one electrical outlet?
And that makes the pending renovations we've been discussing all that.
That's right. That's right. And it means that the cords are plugged on the microscopes, they don't have the different scopes. We are only microphonic. Good job. See, she thinks ahead of us all the time. Yeah, and that's just an example, right? Not figuring on one thing, it's just that we wish we could get to the point where we sort of get beyond how the budget and get into the content of that, so. So I think the general consensus, it sounds like, is that the list that you are working on continue to, if you can put a dollar figure to those items, so we get some kind of an idea. I think one of the things that we have felt as a priority with this board, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we want to be very transparent and very upfront with their counterparts at the board of supervisors and at the county in saying, there won't be a surprise. Here are the things that we are, we have prioritized, here are the things that we want to come to you with as a budget, so that they, we can have those conversations leading up to budgets, and they're just part of the process. And there's an understanding of why.
And be intentional about our budget of need.
Sound fair, Mr. Reed? Okay. Anything else for us, Shannon, in regards? Does that give you what you need to go with for now? And then we'll continue to think to, if there are things that bubble up?
Yes, email or text, phone calls, anything that comes up, so that when we present our budget in January, it will be as inclusive as possible to give you a completed document.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Margaret, we are here again. So if no other questions for Shannon and budget input, then we're on to items for action, and the first item, Dr. Hester, is you, and it is the VSBA 2022 policy update, second reading.
Yes, second reading, so if you'll remember back about a month ago, we spoke a little bit on the first reading of IIa, which is instructional materials policy that is intended to reflect enactment of Virginia Code 22.1 to 16.8, which is a result of Senate Bill 656, which is requiring the Virginia Department of Education to provide some model guidance, and then for school boards to pass policies on IIa and then IIAB by January 1st of 2023. And so I just encourage everyone to make sure we read through it and make the decisions accordingly, and then IIAB supplementary materials selection and adoption. So just a review from last meeting.
So it is an item for action, it's something that we will need a motion and a vote on now. So remember here, this is a policy that will go into effect upon the reading, so January 1, but for operational purposes or for when it needs to be fully executed, it will be the beginning of the school year next year. And so we are merely voting on the policy, not on the rollout procedures for the policy.
Now, do you want one motion for both policies, or do you want separate motions?
I think we could do the motion on to approve the 2022 policy updates, and again, we use the VSBA policy.
Okay. I move that we approve and adopt the 2022 policy updates, 11A and 11AB, as presented.
You have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So policy IIa and IIAB have passed as presented. So now we're on to items for auction, the first set of items, if you've had a chance to look at that, we just need approval for that to go to auction. I need a motion for Set 1.
I'll make a motion for Set 1 to go to auction.
You have a second?
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Set 1 can go to auction, Shannon. I'll also need a motion for items for auction, Set 2.
I move that we approve the items for auction, Set 2.
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, items for auction, Set 2's been approved to go to auction. Okay, so the next three items, and we'll take them individually just for, just to keep it clean. We have field trip request, the first one, FFA Block and Bridle, this is not a new request, it's something they do every year, February 10th, February 11th, everyone signed off on that below us, so can we have a motion to approve that field trip?
I'll make a motion to approve the FFA Block and Bridle Horse Contest Field Trip.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so the field trip has been approved, February 10th, February 10th to February 11th. So we've got a second field trip request, this is a two-weekend trip, FFA Block and Bridle, the livestock contest. May I have a motion to approve that field trip unless there's discussion?
I move that we approve the field trip request for the FFA Block and Bridle Livestock Contest on 2/23 through 2/25, 2023.
Second? Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That field trip request has been approved. So the final field trip request we have from FFA is a new field trip request, it is an out-of-state field trip request. It is for the kids that just won the stakes oils contest to go compete, correct, Mr. Ramsey, in Oklahoma, I believe. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to approve that field trip request?
Make a motion to approve the FFA National Land and Range Judging Contest, April 30th through May 5th.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that field trip request has been approved. So now we will need to go into closed session, we're going to need to do that through personnel. If I can have a motion to send us a closed session for personnel.
I move that the school board go into closed meeting to discuss and consider the personnel positions for the Nelson County School Boards and/or other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.23711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotivation salaries, discipline, and other expenses that involve the cost of employees of any public property.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in closed session. First time here. First time here.